There's twenty nine. Yeah, it was in the nation or eight years ago. It's just that I try like.
Yeah, they're all in my hair with us.
Yeah.
Both of them.
So I don't know.
We can't be.
I don't think we're gonna do. Wherever this. I'm just gonna pull that ass.
Probably.
That's that's.
Oh, there we are. I could make it in the.
I got it.
All right.
All right. Yeah.
Okay. That's. That's. I just thought. I'm pretty much. Great information.
Yes.
I lose. I'm trying to put it over here for counting like. First off. Yeah. I just don't. It's. Well.
You're here for a particular item. We think that we recognize a lot of neighborhood folks. You'll be able to have that handled and then and leave if you want it. If you want to stay, of course. You can stay for as much of the meeting as you're interested in. So we have a great guest speaker. I'm excited to hear from River Junction Arts Council. We're gonna table that quickly and do the reports and hear on what we think is the item of most people's interest, the streets project. So for for public comment, if your item is on the agenda, we will have a public hearing on the adoption of the nuisance ordinance, which is some edits to our current nuisance ordinance, as well as the twenty twenty five street and utility improvement public hearing. So if you have comments related to that, please say your comment for that time so that it's recorded as part of the public hearing. Otherwise, if you have anything you want to share with council, just join us at the microphone so we can see and hear you. If you're having trouble getting out of your seat, just stand up and we can probably, we can probably do okay. So just state your name and residence for the record and share anything you'd like to share with council. And if you could keep your comments to about two minutes so that everyone gets a chance to speak. Any public comment unrelated to agenda items?
A little louder.
Better. That better.
Better.
That's on me. Yeah. Any public comment related to items that are not on the agenda, just general public comment for council?
Bill has one comment on Airbnb.
Sure.
So that.
And that's all.
I didn't notice.
That's not the agenda. Do you want to share that now?
It's agenda.
It's not a public hearing, so you can make make comment out if you like.
Oh.
Yeah.
There's.
I'm loving.
We just like to keep the the comments related to the hearing recorded with the hearing, so you're welcome.
I know. Hi, Bill Kay, two through four third streets. There were two things I wanted to mention. One was regarding the Airbnb's. And I agree with the concept of limiting them. And one of my thoughts was possibly to limit them. Let me slow down. Housing is a concern in Waukesha, right? We have issue with housing. We want to sell slots by increase affordable housing. Along those lines, I think if we're gonna have Airbnb's, we should learn that. And we might want to create a balance between or housing and percentage of Airbnb's. Just a concept that if we have three thousand four hundred fifty five homes, we can pick a percentage and say one percent can be Airbnb or a percent. And try to set the numbers based on housing.
Thanks. Thanks for that comment. We will talk about this later. It's not a hearing, but if you want to stick around with that discussion, you're welcome to. And thanks for your comment.
Okay, thanks.
Anything further?
So any other comments related to the Airbnb item you can speak now?
And we will. We'll discuss that later. It's just not a public hearing at that time. All right, we had great comments in the last June meeting, so we we appreciate that. All right, hearing nothing further. Any changes or additions to the agenda? Anybody want any added items?
One of the people for the FEMA thing is here, so if we can move that up with the streets and stuff sooner, that would be good.
And I wanted to pull junkyard ordinance and the steps that along with. Um, please. Six point.
Junkyard ordinance with.
Or.
So that's with that's currently consent eight seven. Okay. So any further changes from council or staff? I think we'll reorder it as streets discussion. The FEMA ish, the FEMA item, then we'll hear from Paul as our our guest presenter. Thank you for being patient with us, Paul. And we'll just do things in order. Any other changes to the consent aside from Caroline's request to to take the junkyard ordinance and mine with the public nuisance ordinance coefficient? Right, hearing that, what was the committee report streets? Was today, Tom.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, street movement this morning, eight thirty was pre-related agenda. We have fifteen minute parking request by Hembrook Avenue Coffee Shop. And we have fifteen minute parking request by the license bureau place. We talked about both of them. And since I don't know why, if it was Mr. What, but the fifteen minute parking spot that was identified by the license room was wasn't put back in the street project. So they felt that we're gonna put that back and hopefully that'll fill the need for that block. And then we talked about the engine replacement in the squad. Virgil's squad, Public Works would paper that out. But what is the column? Our RV is a scout and then we would get the truck. So use some twenty twenty six after. Oh, basically, you have traded it and probably get fiction or box separate. More. We talked about future park plan, getting swings in at Gruger Park. Uh, we know it's gonna be pretty full up there with volleyball courts, but we were gonna take a look at that. And we just gave them a brief update on park projects around town. Nothing bigger than that. That's it.
Thank you much. Utilities.
We discussed the utility improvement, which we'll have a hearing on, and also the what's the other thing here? Oh, the California Overland, which we'll discuss later too. That, nothing else.
Uh, we're thirty.
Um. Further discussion with respect to the DNR mitigation and our barge terminal. Working through that, we discussed some engineering with respect to the barge terminal as well. More applications for grants and some success in those. And that's about it. Rest, Caroline is. Yeah.
Land.
Uh, we had a public hearing to talk about junkyard and outdoor story for things on the agenda as well. Uh, then we had lengthy discussion on the nuisance ordinance or some of the changes to that. So again, we'll discuss that.
Anything from Figer or? Ryan's not here. I think if I really want to sit, you were.
Um, not really. I guess I just want to give a quick update on where we're at with that.
Okay.
Got a nonstop over this year, so we're what two run. Which we topped out one hundred twenty five last year, and they've been fire call themselves, the rescue's been on the water eight times already. And uh, so just kind of give you guys up where we're at with that stuff. And uh, you see the ten thousand dollar training grant we applied for. Me and Jesse Bolden, train officer, and we received that ten thousand dollar grant. Probably for a couple more grants for around here, and we're kind of wait to see what I said. So that's fine. We're at it right now. So.
All right, thanks, Darren.
Yeah.
All right, any updates from council? All right, we'll hear from Caroline for the administrative report.
Okay, um, I attended the lead of Minnesota Cities Conference. Um, just learned a lot of good, good best practices and learning from other communities. W and B Financial provided us, has announced that they um will provide an additional seventy five thousand dollars for the athletic field for new projects. Staff is done pricing for pickleball lighting, some turf, additional fencing, um, an automatic sprinkler, and that we also received suggestions on an AED and a basketball court. But as pricing is coming in, it looks like we'll just have funds available for those initial items. So we'll try to draft a preliminary email to W and B Financial and take all those items through council for our procurement policy. We listed the Cannon Park Lot for sale, and I've received two inquiries so far. We received a ten thousand dollar grant to support digging to look at contamination at the old athletic field for preparation for the highway project. We have found some areas of debris, but also areas that are clean, so that'll help determine where the future roadway is gonna go. And another note for the next meeting, but just to start thinking about, we were approached by Three Rivers about the replacement of their bus. In twenty eighteen, the city provided a match on a new bus for Three Rivers, and that was sixteen thousand dollars. And the local municipality has to provide the matching funds on the bus. And so now we're being asked to budget for sixteen, six thousand dollars per year for five years to continue transit services in Waukesha. So we'll put that on the next agenda for a presentation for them about user ridership and then then a further discussion if we are willing to do the match, so.
If I'm on that advisory board, as is Mike Wabi, if anybody wants any further information about that, it was kind of a surprise. It was a surprise to us to learn about this, but I guess it shouldn't have been. They they basically haven't been able to access new buses since before COVID. And through that period of time, they've gone from the seventy thousand dollar vehicles to two hundred and thirty nine thousand dollar vehicles. So they haven't thought about a pilot ban option for Waukesha based on the ridership in our community. And it sounds like that's very much on the table, so that'll be part of our autumn discussion. But if you have any insight into ridership, I would appreciate that, being on that advisory committee, not being a part of the social services part of our community. I don't have a lot of insight to share. So if you do, um, you know, feed it through me, if you hear things that are working, things that are working, uh, we want to be able to voice that. But the cost share piece, because it predates Caroline and I was, we we understood this to be a conversation about how can we improve services in your community? And it was actually a, how can we get a memory of understanding in front of your council? We told them we have to, we need a little more time to to get that ready. So they're gonna make some recommendations and then are they gonna present an?
Hopefully, in August, we'll put that on the agenda.
And then just since there's so many members of the public can read this Cannon Park language that we use, it's not Cannon Park. It's a parcel on Hyawatha and Milligan. It is not the park that you think of as Cannon Park with the cannon in it. It is the grassy area that's the corner lot on Milligan and Hyawatha that's being marketed for housing. All right. Thank you, Caroline. Then we have the consent agenda absent the item that eight seven, we have the regular city council minutes from six three, the special city council minutes from six nine, contract for the police service with Kellogg, some peddler's permits, uh, July warrants, the state of Minnesota joint powers agreement, the CDA, the first week, oh, that's sorry, take that one off, Waukesha Fire Department, front concrete apron replacement, the engine replacement in Waukesha Police Department Squad Transfer to Public Works, as Tony described, the pay classification change for EMT term paramedic, and the resolution accepting grant navigator funding from the lead of Minnesota Cities. We have a motion to approve.
Oh, we said.
So we'll first you, Tim, we have a second from Brian. Any further discussions? All those in papers say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Proposed, say no. All right, now we're gonna pull the strip project up first. I think that's where ninety percent of you would like to either have questions and ask or want to have the presentation made. Do you want to tee this up? All right. If everything, Brian's gonna do. Brian's our city engineer. Thanks for being here, Ryan.
Hello, good to see everybody.
You too.
Um, I have a bit of a presentation I'll go through.
Great.
To look at describing project and hopefully answer some of the questions folks have. And then happy to take a question after that.
Ryan's just speaking in the microphone, right? Hopefully that's fine, then.
Just a little better.
This thing is it's all a little closer.
It's louder when you add up.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. So if you do the next slide here, this is the twenty twenty five street utility improvement project. Uh, the project itself consists really of three different types of work. There's a milliner overlay project that includes several streets. There's a couple of streets that are doing what we call our reclaim and pave, which is a little bit of a step up above a millon overlay. And then there's one section of the street where we're doing a full reconstruct. So sewer and water utilities being reconstructed along with the street. So the millon overlay streets include Fourth Street West, Third Street West was the alley that runs between Lawrence Boulevard and East Main Street, kind of at an angle. Washington Avenue, a portion of Eleventh Street East. The two reclaiming and paving sections would be Wayne Vista Drive, Skyline Drive. Section that's targeted for full reconstruction was Market Street. I will note that the preliminary engineering report or feasibility report that council reviewed and approved previously had three additional streets in the millon overlay category. Uh, there's a section of Fourth Grand Boulevard, Prospect Avenue, Bailey Avenue. Just based on budget discussion with staff, it was determined that those sections of street should be pulled. Project would have been acceptable budget is around one point nine million dollars. Those streets would be looked at in the future for improvements. They're in a little better condition and can afford to wait a few years for improvement. So the next few slides just show some photos of the existing street condition, like Skyline Drive here. And then the next one is Forest Street West, uh, West of Maiden Avenue. We've got the the alley between Lawrence Boulevard and East Main Street there showing some of the deterioration. Then Eleventh Street East. And then that block between Milligan and Pierce Avenue. Next, the intersection of Market Street East and Washington Avenue. This is the section that's targeted for full reconstruction. Then another shot, a couple of shots of Market Street on the next couple of slides. So as far as the existing conditions, I want to talk about first go through what the existing conditions are on the sections that are targeted for millon overlay or reclaim. Uh, storm sewer in these areas mostly consists of surface drainage uh, along either Betumis curb lines or ditches and typically flow to storm sewer adjacent streets. So there's uh drainage that exists along the existing street sections. Sanitary sewer, there is sewer that has some of these streets. Can ranges from some vitrified clay pipe that ranges from well fifty to over a hundred years old. There is some newer PVC pipe along Fourth Street. There's a newer, relatively newer PVC pressure sewer up on Skyline Drive. Most of the services are either clay or cast iron services in the plate pipe areas. And then the PVC pressure services up on uh, Skyline Drive and then along Fourth Street, PVC pipe exists. So um, that's the condition of the existing sanitary sewer. Water main is um, cast iron pipe for the most part, uh, between forty inch diameter. With the exception, I didn't notice on the slide here, but there's some PVC or ductile iron water main up on Skyline Drive. The age of the water main ranges from fifty to a hundred years old. And these utility ages are consistent with the utility ages that you've seen on some of your prior millon overlay projects. And we just noted to make you aware that you're you're making some improvements on top of some pretty old utilities. And there's some some risks associated with that. I just want you to be aware of that. Uh, with storm sewer wise, I'm now talking about Market Street. So storm sewer, there's some certain existing surface drainage that kind of drains down to the intersection where it goes into some fresh basins. And that red area circled there is kind of a low area within the woods that's serving as a bit of an infiltration area right now, but it isn't very well defined. And it's wooded and it's kind of full of debris and it's not really something that Public Works is able to maintain or monitor right now in current condition. Sanitary sewer pipe along Market Street is that old clay pipe. It's about seventy five years old. We just know that that old clay pipe is a source of infiltration and flow into your system, which you don't want. You don't want clean water into your sewer pipe. And the services are either clay or cast iron, similar to what we've seen on other projects. Uh, water main is a four inch cast iron. Cast iron pipe, maybe some ductile iron in there, uh, but it's it's relatively old, ninety five to a hundred years old. So it's done its job for many years. Services are likely three quarter inch.
Share your presentation with our online viewers and colleagues.
Oh, sure.
Okay. All right.
The services are likely three quarter inch and they're either galvanized, presumed lead or copper pipe. We don't know for sure. We've got some data from the lead service line inventory that we've done, but we'll identify those as we, as we build the project. You really can't tell until you dig them up. Proposed improvements, um, or there's the utility map, yeah, so this was showing where the existing utilities are up here and there's some that. It's water being along the northwest side of the road, sewers kind of generally down the center and see the storm sewer down there.
Ryan, any of those you feel for sewer line? Are those still from previous? Built programs?
Are they? Say that again?
No, we we've filled a lot of.
Oh, line? No.
I know.
No, none of these are line. You have a bunch of line in town, but these these weren't. So talking about proposed improvements, um, first talking about the millon overlay areas and the reclaim and pave areas, millon overlays will be generally what we've seen in the past, done several projects over the last ten, fifteen years, millon overlay projects. Some of these streets have asphalt curb, some don't. We'll basically be milling off the the top surface, putting two inches of asphalt on, uh, new asphalt curb, you know, that exists. And that's pretty simple. Uh, the reclaim and pave sections along uh, 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 let me say it again. A Skyline Drive and Wayne Vista Drive, that's just a little bit different. Instead of just milling off the top surface, they'll bring in a reclaim machine and they'll grind up the asphalt and the gravel that's underneath to create a new gravel base that's mixed asphalt and gravel. Makes a good base for a new street. We'll put four inches of new asphalt on top of that. So that's the difference between millon overlay and reclaim and pave. And the reason we do that on some streets and not others is these two streets are in the asphalt's in the poor enough condition that it really wouldn't hold up with only a two inch overlay on the top. So we do a little bit um, more extensive rehab on those streets that are a little bit worse condition. We might do some spot repairs if we find some soft spots in the road, um, full depth patch. And then if there are areas with concrete curbs deteriorating, we'll we'll do some spot repairs under the curb. Uh, the expected life of the uh, where are we at here? Storm Ridge? Go back to. Yeah, expected life for the improvements on the millon overlays typically ten to fifteen years. You're blessed with some very sandy soils for the most part in Waukesha, so with good maintenance, you can get, you know, twenty to twenty five years out of those millon overlays. We do want to know with the millon overlays, you will get cracks that will come through, and the cracks that are in the existing asphalt will reflect through. So it isn't a failure of the project if cracks come through. That's just to be expected with a millon overlay project. You'll also see it, probably note it later here, but um, we'll talk about that. The bird bass reclaim and pave is twenty twenty five years for sure with proper maintenance, potentially longer. The storm drainage, um, there are no storm sewer type or really improvements proposed as part of the millon overlay. It's part of the reclaim and pave up on Skyline. We'll be looking at replacing some culverts up there. We'll make some casting adjustments for the manual covers that are in the streets to adjust those to the new grades. I like to talk about bird baths on millon overlays. Really, we're we can't change the grade of the surface on a millon overlay. So if they're bird baths now, they're likely to be bird baths in the future. They might change location, they might change size, but um, you're likely gonna have some bird baths in millon overlay street sections if they exist now. We really can't change that, so we're not changing the grade of the street. On the reclaim and pave sections, you should see some improvement in that because we can control the grade of the street. Uh, sanitary sewer improvements on a millon overlay, really no improvements there other than adjusting and correcting manual castings and and bringing those up to snuff. Water main, no improvements proposed for the water main, aside from valve adjustments, so valve boxes in the street. If we did include those water main improvements, it'd be a full reconstruction because you'd tear it up the whole street. But we do want to know, as we've noted before, given the age of the water main and it's cast iron, you've had water main breaks in the past. A lot of times that's a service connection, so there's always the possibility you put brand new asphalt service on, and the next summer you get a water main break, you get to dig up the street. So that should the rescue tape with some of those millon overlay streets. Market Street proposed improvements, it's a full reconstruction, so dig up everything, just like the downtown project. Replace the aggregate base, new asphalt, new curb and gutter. No sidewalk being proposed as a part of this project. The any of those driveway improvements that are impacted will be replaced with a concrete apron. And then there's a asphalt driveway behind that. It'll be patched in with asphalt. It's concrete. It'll be patched in with concrete. We are looking at trying to improve the geometry of that intersection. If you are familiar with that, it's just a huge intersection. And it's kind of hard to tell, you know, where the one street ends and another begins. So you see in the drawing, we're trying to correct that in that northwest corner. You gotta pull that in, make it a little more clear where the four streets come together, that it is really four streets at an intersection. You did run some turning movements for vehicles on there. They'll be able to make their turns just fine. So that should reduce a little bit of the area that Tony has to plow, maintain in the future, so. Um, storm sewer will be putting in, we start on super tight catch basins. Then we're gonna clear that area that's wooded and active some excavation and better define it as an infiltration based basin that's intended to deal with stormwater. So city staff can monitor that, maintain it, keep it clear and those types of things. So we'll see some loss of trees there, but it's really better to find that that area that's serving a stormwater purpose right now. Yeah, and then sanitary sewer, we'd be replacing basically all pipes and services and animals. Same thing with pipes, services, hydrants, valves. We are stubbing in a couple of services. I think it's two services in that lot that's uh, uh, where we vacated the right away to make room for a buildable lot there. On Main Street, that uh, was at the southwest corner, I think, but the intersection along Main Street. So there's really. Sewer stubs there because it wouldn't be in the right location. Project costs? It's a slide.
Oh, just.
I wonder if you're all on it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Everybody is supposed to tell me how to fill this.
We're starting.
Your stuff. Got two different assessment calculations here, one for the mill overlay reclaim project. If you can go to the next slide.
Sorry. Okay.
Um, so you have an assessment policy, enter that policy, mill overlays are classy improvement. It basically says those improvements should be assessed twenty percent of the benefiting process of. It basically says those improvements should be assessed twenty percent of the benefiting process uh, properties on a tour unit base and equivalent residential unit. And there's a process for calculating that. When we do run that calculation, we end up with estimated assessments, preliminary assessments for the mill and overlay reclaim project of about eighteen hundred dollars. For uh, next one, yeah, per uh, ERU. Um, the individual assessment ranges on the, on the preliminary assessment are all are anywhere from that single unit eighteen hundred up to about thirty-eight thousand. And that's a larger property, uh, this basically the golf course property up on Skyline Drive. This, um, they equate to several ERUs in your, in your policy, the way that's calculated. So that's the the largest assessment. The average is about eighteen hundred and fifty-four. Um, so it's really just that one. These are similar ERU assessments to your past projects from twenty fourteen, sixteen, nineteen, and last year. When we take into account inflation, there was that a hundred dollars of the assessment from last year's. And then there are some properties that would receive a zero dollar assessment, not because they were assessed on the, on the, as a part of the twenty twelve project. Your policy says there, it can't be assessed within fifteen years. The Market Street, a little bit different type of improvement, um, by some means. Ca- calculated similarly, we go twenty percent of the project costs um, to the benefiting properties. When we run those calculations here, we end up with some larger um, larger assessments. Go to the next slide there. So you can see we have assessments for street, and we have an assessment for water, an assessment for sanitary. So depending on, uh, everybody gets a street assessment, but depending on whether you have water sewer service would dictate whether you could get an assessment for that. You can see the numbers there, seven thousand for street, four thousand for water, seven thousand for sanitary. Um, that equates to uh, about fifteen thousand dollars total. Might be a typo on the sanitary there, but I know the toll is right at fifty thousand, because I don't think those numbers are the same. But it is a total of fifteen thousand, if you have all three of those. If you compare that to the downtown project, um, all, if you had all three uh, sewer, water and street assessments, we were down at nine thousand dollars. So significantly higher. Why is that? It's because there are very few properties on this stretch of street. We got an intersection, intersections are usually expensive, and you've got very few properties to spread that assessment across. So one thing you might want to look at, tonight, if you authorize the property with the resolution not reapproving the assessments, assessments would be recalculated once the bids come in. And you would have the option of producing those assessments if you chose to do so. Your policy is a guide. Ultimately, you can decide, uh, council can decide that those assessments should be.
Okay, we we ran into that problem in twenty thirteen too. I don't think we lowered that assessment. The old property owners.
Yeah, I'd have to look back and see. I think this is still higher than what those were, if you take into contemplation, but we can check on that.
I would like to know.
Yeah, we can get that information for you, prior to the assessment process starting. Then again, there are some properties here that would not be.